Well, hello everyone and thank you for being here tonight. Welcome to the 2019 City Council Candidate Forum. My name is Holly Kemp and I have been the news editor of the Aiken Standard for the past four years. And during that time, I have had a front row seat to what an impact the Aiken City Council can have on the local community here in Aiken. So I'm just delighted to see all of these faces out in the audience right now that Aiken Standard posted this forum for you, the voters. So thank you so much for being here tonight. I'd also like to thank the candidates for being here tonight. We really appreciate your participation in this forum and for you speaking in front of all of the voters tonight as well. I'd like to point out to everyone that the Aiken Standard published an election guide in today's paper. If you do not have a copy, please make sure to pick one up today. We have extras on the tables in the back. And it includes a Q and A with all of the candidates who are running for city council in the general election. And it also includes information about the District Three Republican primary happening next week, as well as polling precinct information. So please make sure to pick up a copy before you leave today if you don't have them. And even though the District Three primary is next week, we wanted to invite all of the candidates here tonight so that the public could hear from each and every one of them who is seeking office in city council. The November general election will be here before you know it. And the paper believes that debates and open Q and A sessions are a fantastic way for the general public to see, hear, and engage with the candidates who are running for the opportunity to represent them. It's so important that you guys get to hear the candidates and see them face to face instead of just reading about them. So thank you so much again for being here tonight. And with that, I want to go ahead and get us started. I'm going to introduce our moderator for tonight. You may have seen his name in the paper before. You'll definitely see it tomorrow with the breaking news story. It is our Savannah Riverside and political reporter Colin Demarest.
I gotta make this a little taller. How are you guys? Thank you Holly and thank you guys for being here tonight. I'd now like to invite Aiken Mayor Rick Osmond on stage. Osmond, Republican, is seeking reelection in November. He is running for opposed and he will not be on the August 13th ballot, but you'll see him in November. Mayor.
Thank you. I was getting nervous. It was mighty quiet, so I appreciate it. Good evening to Ms. Kemp, Mr. Demarest, Fund Overby, the publisher, and all the staff at Aiken Standard. We appreciate them hosting this forum, an opportunity to express opinions, ideas, and share with you, the voter. It's certainly been a privilege for me over the last four years to serve as your mayor. It's been certainly something as Fred Kavonoff said on the day he turned over the gavel, it was an honor that you can't express and you really can't. So I appreciate the trust that the citizens have put in me in the last four years. I think we've seen a lot of great accomplishments. You don't have to look any further than now here on our alleyway. When we closed it to cars, made it pedestrian only, we were criticized and said, oh, it'll never work. Now we've created a place in our downtown where people like to gather, where they like to come together and enjoy music and art. And it's something that we're certainly very proud of. As we look at roadways and we talk about the Powder House Connector, which is actually a plan that we are submitting to the State Infrastructure Bank for MAX, it's about a hundred million dollar project. The city and the county both put money in our CPST, which thank you for voting for and passing on the last ballot. We took six and nine respectively. We have up to about nineteen million dollars dedicated to the project for MAX. So we feel like we have a good opportunity of receiving the state funds to finish that project. It would reduce traffic in that most congested area outside of the East Gate in front of the mall by over nineteen percent. It would make a difference. The way to reduce traffic on Whiskey Road isn't by putting more lanes, it's by adding alternative routes. And that's exactly what this does. And at the same time, opens up 400 acres of property which can be developed in a right way with a thoroughfare that has limited access, so it doesn't end up being another Whiskey Road. So we're really excited about the opportunity that we have in heading out some of these issues that we've dealt with. Certainly expanding our infrastructure out towards I-20 to exit 22 is an important project and a priority of this council. And annexation, I mean growing our city in a way that's controlled and in a way that is representative of the services that we have to offer. I want to take a minute if I could. You know, over the last week, we've really had some headlines locally and nationally. And I will say, I've written letters to the mayors of Dayton and they'll pass on behalf of the city saying that Aiken stands with them and they're in our prayers and our thoughts during this time. But even locally, if you see one person shot, it's too much. One thing that's, and I'm sure you'll hear the theme, is that safety is important and it does follow the responsibility of the city and our council to do all we can for that. And I'm going to tell you, what can you do against evil? I don't know that there is an action that you can take to just stop some of the evil walking into a big box store and unloading, but I'm going to tell you, in a moment of reflection, that I think this city council that we have now is committed to making sure that our public safety officers have all the resources that they need to fight this, to come ahead, to do the analysis so that they can see things, whether it be on social media and things stirring, but we're not going to tolerate a city. We like the title of best small town in the south, but as important as a city and as important for elected officials that our residents still say. And so, thank you. So this is going to be a commitment and I'm sorry to be away with this, but I just want to let you know there's a commitment from myself and other council members. I think you're going to see this as we work with public safety even in the weeks coming up, that we're going to make a stand, make sure that those officers have the resources they have to protect our citizens and you know. So thank you so much. Let's remember our public safety and our prayers. Let's remember these cities that are going through these horrible times and our thoughts and prayers. And let's continue just to strive to be the best Aiken that we can be. Thank you and God bless.
Thank you, Mayor. Now it's Aiken City Council member Gail Diggs's turn. Diggs is a Democrat and she's seeking reelection in November as well. She currently represents District One, which is largely on the north side. Her opponent in the general election is Jared Lee Stevens. He's a Republican. He declined to participate tonight. District Race One will not be on the August 13th ballot, but November will be. So it's Council member Diggs.
To our mayor, Rick Osmond, to my fellow candidates, to all of the family members and friends that's here tonight, and to the Aiken Standard, good evening. My name is Gail Diggs and I have been your representative for District One for the past eight years. And it is after prayerful consideration, consultation with my family, encouragement from my constituents, and my genuine love for this community, my community, that I'm happy to announce that I will seek reelection in November. Our beautiful historic town is at an exciting but pivotal crossroad. Now, more than ever, our community's success and longevity rests on navigating our growth with careful assessment, fiscal responsibility, integrity, and unity. We must reserve space for sharing fresh ideas while remaining committed to the stewardship of the resources that we already possess. It is with this common sense approach to serving Aiken and District One that I humbly request your support. My record reflects my lifelong passion and commitment to public service. I have proudly spent the last forty years in every corner of Aiken, working to make our city safer, friendlier, and more citizen focused. My career has been geared to the betterment of our state and local government, working with nonprofit organizations, and service with different community health groups. Over the past several decades, I'm blessed to have served on many meaningful local boards and commissions that worked tirelessly to assist in the continuing the goodness in our community. Those include Aiken Corporation, Aiken Downtown Development Association, Aiken Regional Medical Centers Community Advisory Board, Aiken Community Service Network, Aiken County Homeless Coalition, Aiken County Veterans Council, AdSAP Advisory Board, Troy Development Board of Aiken County, Vice Chair of COTUS Kids Foundation, North Aiken Elementary School Improvement Council, USC Aiken Inclusionary Advisory Council, Crown and Lupus, Aiken NAACP, Aiken County Democratic Party, and Aiken County Democratic Win. I'm a former board member of the United Way of Aiken County, Aiken Barnwell Mental Health Center, the USC Aiken Partnership Board, and I was appointed to the Aiken County Board of Disabilities by former Governor Nikki Haley. Additionally, I've served on Aiken Strategic Planning Committee when we were named an All-America City back in 1997. That's not so long ago. I've also had the pleasure of being a small business owner in beautiful downtown Aiken from 1981 to 1985. Most importantly, I'm proud to have raised my family in Aiken and even prouder that my oldest daughter Brittany and my son-in-law Jeffrey have chosen Aiken as their home and to raise their children, my grandchildren, Harper, five, and Houston, two. I still remain prayerful that my youngest daughter Simone, who's in Raleigh, North Carolina, and her husband Brandon, and their two-month-old son, my newest grandson, Beckham Thomas Griffin, will join us. As an Aiken County native, one of the greatest honors of my life has been to take my knowledge of our community and utilize it as a trusted and informed voice for all by serving as representative for District One. I take pride in the partnerships that we've built and maintained in our wonderfully diverse district. I take pride in being present and engaged in every corner of not only District One, but throughout the city of Aiken. I take pride in my genuine relationships with my neighbors and in understanding their different needs. It is these relationships that have resulted in various citizen requested improvements in our district, like a renovated pool and poolhouse at Smith Hazel Center, which is due to be opened in the summer of 2020. Bathrooms at Perry Park, something that we fought for for so long. Properly deeded streets and streetlights in Deodor Plantation, and the addition of our beautiful new Generations Park. It has resulted in developments that focus on keeping our neighborhoods safe, like the brand-new Aiken County or Aiken City Public Safety Facility that's housed in District One. Support of the Citizens Advisory Board and being involved in our Neighborhood Homeowners Association, like in Crossland Park with my friend Gary Young. It has resulted in business opportunities that will positively impact our community, like the new site for our beloved Children's Place that's due to open in 2020. And our priority to promote public and private partnerships as we carefully develop the plans for our opportunity zone and continue to grow towards I-20. Though District One has many proven successes, there's still so much work to be done. So I ask you to join me on this journey of continuing to work in our district and in our city. I promise I will remain focused on smart growth, safe communities, and servant leadership. I will continue to discerningly move forward in areas that promote growth while celebrating those things that make our stunning city of Aiken a unique place to call home. Most importantly, I will continue to put the people in Aiken, and especially in District One. First, for our city, it's only as successful as the people who call it home. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Diggs. So the primary election on August 13th, that's next Tuesday, will focus on the Republicans in the District Three Aiken City Council race. There are three Republicans seated up front. It's John Clecker, Nick Weaver, and Kay Dearden-Brohl. They're with us tonight, like I said. The fourth candidate, the one Democrat, John Recht, is here as well. We want, I want to make this clear, only Clecker, Weaver, and Brohl will be on the August 13th ballot. Only residents of that district can vote in that race. And so with that said, we wanted to invite all the candidates, Holly kind of touched on this, seven candidates for three seats to speak tonight. This will be our only municipal forum this year and kind of our best opportunity to see the entire field. So I now like to have the candidates at the stage. Democrat John Recht, who will be on the November ballot, and our reporter Colin. And Republican John Clecker. And Kay Dearden-Brohl. And everybody else. Can we sit? Take a seat, please. And to lay the groundwork, which is for you guys to understand clearly, the candidates before the forum drew who would go first out of the hats, and that will be John Recht.
Oh, boy.
We'll then move down the line, so when John answers first, he will answer the next question last. So that way Kay Dearden-Brohl answers the second question first. Makes sense? Cool. There will be no rebuttals, reputations, cross talk, and not bad for candidates. You'll have two minutes for each question. Holly down there will be keeping track of time. She has thirty seconds and it stops on me. Just a warning, I'm going to be meeting in about two minutes. We've collected questions from the audience prior to this beginning and two will be asked.
You all ready?
Cool. Okay, so question one. First question goes to you, John. This year, Aiken City Council decided to keep the mill rate flat, pivoting away from a previously pitched increase. Do you think that was the right decision and why? And under what conditions would you support increasing millage, which is used to calculate property taxes?
Well, we haven't raised the millage rate since 1988 and it seems to be working well for us at this time, although I'm not certain that stopping taxes or taxing is the best thing. I think we do have to pay our way to some degree. And so, I think it is good that they didn't raise the millage rate, but I also think it's an inevitability that we may have to do that in the near future.
Thank you. Can you hear me all right? I'm sorry. Would you mind just one more time so I get all the pieces?
It's a long and hard question. This year, Aiken City Council decided to keep the mill rate where it was, pivoting away from a previously pitched increase. Do you believe that was the right decision and why? And under what conditions would you support increasing millage?
Okay. All right, you know, being a good Republican, we never like tax increases, do we? But I have to say that over the years, even though we haven't raised the millage, we have added fees and other things. And you can call them whatever you want, those are still taxes in my book. I think this year was probably a good thing that they kept them flat. So I think that that was the right decision for this year. I do not know that that will be possible going forward. When we look at the things that we have to do, we're looking at, lots of us know about the infrastructure issues that we have. We're doing our best. The city's working on them. Some are band-aided, some are, they're having to do piecemeal because, you know, when your car gets a dirty ashtray, you don't get rid of the car. You fix the ashtray, that kind of thing, or the air conditioning. So I think there's something in that going on, but there's going to come a point where these very old sewers, drains, and pipes are going to have to be replaced. And when that happens, in my opinion, that is an area where people are willing to listen about increases. But it has to be very careful. We can't, we have to decide what our wants are and what our needs are, just like we do in a business or at home. If the roof's leaking, guess what? You don't get to take your vacation to Bermuda. You fix the roof because that's a necessity. So that's the way I feel about it.
Thank you. John, you should have a mic.
It's on. Yeah, okay, can you hear me? Good. Well, along with the first two people that have been up here, I'm not a fan of tax increases. I like to see things maintained at a reasonable level within a community and the tax base. We should spend in accordance with that what our community can afford. That being said, there are circumstances in this community where we may be able to raise the amount of taxes that exist, and that revolves around the donut hole situation we have in this city. Now, I know that it's difficult to get that into the city, but if those donut holes are brought into the city, that will increase tax base and it will move things forward at that point in time. If we could do that, that would be something that we should look at first prior to considering moving up a millage rate. Undoubtedly though, because of the delay in improving infrastructure in this community that's been pushed down the road for a lot of years, there probably will be a time where if that is going to get fixed and fixed properly, we may have to consider a millage rate. But I'd like to see alternatives to that before it's done. Reason being, millage rate is a permanent change as a general rule, and once you do it, it's hard to reverse it. You talk about, you know, it hasn't been raised in many, many years, and once you do raise it, it's going to be very difficult for many, many years to reverse that. So are there other alternatives we can take? I would like to explore that. Taxes that, maybe you raise the sales tax for a brief period of time for a specific purpose, like we're doing with the county CSPT. Lots of alternatives. So I think we should be creative with it, but at this point in time, we ought to sit on it and not be increasing taxes unless it's really justified and we can make that point to our community.
Thank you. I'm going to echo what a lot of the others have been saying, that our infrastructure is definitely hurting in areas of our town. If I were to agree to a millage increase, it would be to fix the roads. I can't tell you how many potholes I've almost lost a tire over in the area where I'm at. But it's a good thing now to keep it as it is because our city is moving forward. Our city does have the means to keep things going as it is. But I do believe in order for the city to get better, there are things that are going to have to change. And something like the millage rate would definitely be a step in the right direction for getting more infrastructure, getting more changes that the city does need and that I think the people do want in the city.
Thank you. All right, question two, and A will be answered as you approach. Improving Richland Avenue West Corridor at the top of District Three has been a topic of discussion for some time now. You guys sort of touched on it, the answers in our special section. There have been complaints about crime, outward appearance, and more in the so-called Gateway to Aiken. What is your plan for the corridor and what would you like to see most addressed?
Okay, if any of you received any of my material, you'll see that one of the very first planks or things that I'm concerned with is safety. I've spoken with Chief Baranco and with Sheriff Hunt, and you know what's happened here in Aiken just in the last few days. On Waterloo Street, which is in our district, there was a killing, a shooting, seventeen-year-old child. Then there's been a couple other ones in the last day or so. And then we've got what's happening in the rest of the country. And as we, Mayor Rick spoke, these are things that you will ask yourself, what can we do? What are we going to do to stem this? We're going to have to work together and it's going to have to take other people besides the police. Parents are going to have to be involved. Communities are going to have to speak up. In many communities, they're afraid to speak up, but that's going to have to be what happens. And I have some plans, some other things that we can do to get rid of some of these sites that promote such violent behavior and it's condoned as normal. Children become desensitized. You know, killing someone is no more than a video game and that's just not right. For the Richland Avenue Corridor, you know what we have there also is the old hospital property. And I know this has been a very delicate situation because so many people have fond memories of being born there. You know, how do you get rid of those memories? You can't. But right now, the condition of that building, it's not feasible to salvage. The property sits at a main entrance to our city and it's on nine acres, the last big piece of property in town. And this would give us an opportunity to clean all that up and then that would allow opportunity and development down Richland Road to come up and feed into the city. That is the best way to get more into our city. And I think we should take advantage of it. It's been empty five years, you all. We're getting nothing from that. It's a drain. And now it's become a place where derelict people stay and there's lots of liabilities going on with that. So I think that is the best approach.
Colin, could I just repeat the question again? Go to the beginning, I think.
Improving the Richland Avenue West Corridor at the top of District Three has been a topic of discussion for some time now. You guys touched on it in our special section. There have been complaints about crime, outward appearance, and more in the Gateway to Aiken. What is your plan for the corridor and what would you like to see addressed first or most?
Initially, I would, again, I was shocked when I read about the murder that happened in this area because it's not exactly what you would call a rough in this area because it's not exactly what you would call a rough part of this community. I mean, that's a very nice area, just off of Hayne Avenue, a lot of nice folks, a lot of nice people. So not exactly where you'd expect this to happen. So I honestly have to tell you that, you know, I don't know exactly how to approach that and correct it, other than to leave it in the hands of our safety officials. I've had good confidence in Chief Baranco and in Sheriff Hunt. Spent a lot of time with Chief Baranco about a week ago, and really had a good opportunity to, you know, get a feel for his concern for the community, how he's approaching public safety, a lot of the things that they've done since the two officers were killed in this community in 2013. I mean, this is an unfortunate thing that happened, and I hope they can get this under control. It does fall in their area. Regarding other things in the corridor, I definitely want to see some improvements in that corridor. It's unfortunate that it looks the way it does, but unfortunately, also, it is, the way it's zoned makes it difficult to deal with at this point in time. There are things that we can do that we're currently looking at that have been brought to us on the Planning Commission, at least an initial discussion phase. And that includes looking at the zoning overlays that may allow us a little more control to be able to go ahead and move forward and clean up some of the properties. Now, that's, it's kind of a thing where it's not just on the private owners of the buildings and the properties, but, you know, the city has to be a little bit involved with it at the same time. Don't know where that's going to go at this time because it's just in its preliminary stages at this point in time. So we need to be able to dig into it before we can really find out what's going to go on. Again, the hospital, that is a major, you know, eyesore in our area. And I do know that a lot of people have stood up and want to save it, but I'm also the opinion it's something that probably should be scraped off and something else done there. And a good proposal was brought before us in the Planning Commission. We looked at it. What was promised in the Planning Commission as far as the type of apartments that would be built, the hotel, convention center, those things all seemed to make sense to us. So we voted unanimously to move that ahead to the City Council. So I guess I'm getting the stop memo here. So. She speaks up on you, you know it.
One thing that's very important about the Richland Corridor is the college is right on the other side of that line. And I know a lot of really good things have been going on over USC Aiken, and I've seen a lot of good things coming up with the new electric carts they have for the students to ride on. It allows them to leave the campus and go beyond the Richland Avenue over to like the Walmart and the areas there. But there are a lot of businesses up and down that street that have just fallen into disrepair that really need attention. I don't know what the best answer for getting someone to move in there, but they do need to be cleaned up. We have a lot of good organizations in Aiken through United Way, through other agencies that go around and help people clean up their homes, clean up their communities. We do these days of service, and everyone in the community pitches in. I think we really need to have a program like that to help with these businesses that have fallen into disrepair, that are eyesores to the community and really just need some attention. It's a public safety issue for especially young people to be leaving the campus and walking around in areas they're not familiar with and just having businesses that are shut down and shuttered for years and years. The car dealership in front of Sam's that's just turning into a moat every time it rains. There's just so many things in that area that need to be addressed. And I think having a way for the community to help out and to help clean up this would do a long way towards getting other businesses to come in and help.
Please pass the mic.
That's true. We've got one to go here.
Well, we all know what a eyesore, the West Richland Avenue Corridor is. And the question is, how would I remedy that? Well, I would favor an overlay district that would help the city realize any improvements. Also, I think just beautification would go a long way. Trees, landscaping, sign ordinances would go a long way to fixing that up. Paying for it could come from grants, the hospitality taxes. We could also help the business owners with tax incentives perhaps, or fee rebates to help them make improvements and maintain their own neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Question three. Question three, John Ruff. Census and study data show Aiken's population is aging, and the elder population repeatedly outsizes Aiken's younger population. How can Aiken attract and retain younger residents? How is that a concern to your district?
This district is an older district. There's no doubt about it. I think the average age is somewhere north of sixty, if you look at the registered voters in our district. So, that being said, it's a district where the senior population needs to be looked at very carefully and be, you know, supported as they do provide a huge amount of tax base to this community. They brought, a lot of them moved here because they wanted to move here. They moved here because of the attractiveness of this city and how nice it is, and they're part of that. A fallacy, though, is that seniors don't want young people around, which is absolutely wrong. I mean, there's nothing more fun than seeing, you know, kids out there in the neighborhood and having them involved in our lives, and that's a good thing. As far as getting young people into this community, we have to do things in the community that make it attractive to them, okay? And those kind of things can't be done to the disadvantage of the rest of the community. But things like decent housing and apartments, which young people live in, I mean, more attractive housing and apartments. Young people like to live in places where maybe they got a swimming pool, or they've got activities around them that they can be involved with. Along with that are job opportunities, but there are a lot of job opportunities in this community. And I think a lot of people work in those job opportunities, but do they stay or do they move over to North Augusta where maybe they find a little more attractive lifestyle in the downtown area there? Those are the things we're competing against. I think we have to get out and investigate what would work in our communities and what's worked around here, and maybe bring some of that into Aiken. And I honestly have to say that, you know, that will take a lot of work on the part of the City Council or council committees to really dig into that because I don't know how much of that has really been done up to this point in time.
I think one of the biggest things missing for attracting the younger people in the area are activities, places to go, things to do. I've been in Aiken for eight years. I've been in the CSRA my entire life. At one point in time, I was told Aiken had a skating rink. I think it's now storage. We had a bowling alley. I think it's going to be a Taco Bell. The Checkers next door just closed. Everything seems to be closing up, that it's fun and exciting for young people. There's not a lot of things for them to go and do. The alley is a great step forward. We have a lot of positive things happening there. The Village over at Woodside is a great area. They have a lot of amazing events out there. They had the Ascamire Wienermobile over there a couple years ago. My son loved it. I think we really need to push more community-focused events and have more businesses that are structured towards family and fun enjoyment, not just the restaurants and things that we're getting now that just really don't keep people here because it's not that much different than what they could get in North Augusta or the Augusta area. I think it's very important for us to focus on the families, not just families by blood, but families by community, by social circles. Find activities that people can do and support them. Let people know that they're going on and keep them going for the betterment of the community.
And the question is, how will we attract people, young people, to the city? Well, there is a need for market-rate apartments in the city. And I think if we can establish affordable, small, easily manageable apartments, it would attract young people to the city that are just coming out of college, just getting the job in Augusta or at the Savannah Riverside, young people that are just starting out. I agree, we do need to have a lot more for people to do in the city, for families, for young people. There's got to be something here that keeps them here. And that's, I think, how I would encourage getting young people to come to Aiken. Aiken's always been an attractive place to live. Even before the Savannah Riverside, people came to Aiken. They chose Aiken because of its innate charms. And I think the same thing will happen. Young people will come. People will always come to Aiken regardless. So, but we've got to have a care out in front of them. Thank you.
You know, one of the things is, having lived here for so long, my son loves Aiken. He's thirty-nine years old. We moved here, he was reared here, and after he got his degree, he couldn't find a job in this area, so he went somewhere else. I think that it's important that we attract other industry here so that our young people can not only grow up here, but stay here, have a career here. And then those people become the leaders of tomorrow so that, well, thank God we got Nick, a nice young guy, but you know, the rest of us are going to have to pass that mantle along to them. And I'm thinking about, if we streamline that process to start small businesses, it's amazing how many of our millennials in a few decades each way want to start their own small business. But if the red tape is so huge, they're not able to get through that. And I know there's some that have done that and have been successful, and there's some that done it and it just fell through. Also, we talked about the activities. Yes, our skating rink is gone. That was sad. Our bowling alley is gone. You know, if we start to build the mall out on Whiskey Road, it's not going to be a mall like we're thinking of, like was there. My son happens to live in a place where they have it. It's called a village center, I think is what it is. And there's little enclaves and streets, and when you go there, you're looking at a village. And there's movie theaters, there's bowling alleys, there's shopping, restaurants, high-end shopping, and that, there's always young people there, always young people there. So it's a combination of all those things, jobs, entertainment, you know, things that they like to do. And we can do it. It's just going to take some work and some time. We've had negative growth now for a good, long while. We've got to get that turned around. Thank you.
Nick, you first. What is the single biggest issue the city is facing right now? How would you help address or fix it?
I think our single biggest issue right now is the infrastructure, whether it's the roads, whether it's the drainage, or the traffic. I think we have a lot of things in the city that could be made better with the infrastructure improvements. The buildings are aging. They do need some TLC, and I don't think we need to hurt the historical significance or take away from the beauty of downtown Aiken, but a lot of it does need to be cleaned up. The center of the city is amazing, but you move out one or two blocks and it really goes downhill fast. I really think that getting infrastructure out to the further sections of the city that are maybe, don't feel as incorporated as the city center is very important to helping Aiken grow, to making the tax base grow, to making Aiken feel more as a whole instead of a fractured society like we have now where there seem to be pockets of people that just kind of stay in their area and keep to themselves. So I think getting the infrastructure in a better situation, not only in downtown, but out in the north side, the south side, the east side, the west side, all over Aiken, I think that's very important right now.
First, John Ruff.
Would you, please? Question, please.
What is the single biggest issue the city is facing right now, and how would you help address or fix it?
Well, let's call it our future. I think we're looking at a three-pronged approach to this. Three issues that are kind of dovetailed into each other. One is economic development, and another is infrastructure, and a third is the housing, again, attracting people, young people, to Aiken. And it all boils down to our future is what we've got to aim toward. We should build toward I-20. I think that's essential. We've got to run our sewer and water out to beyond I-20 so that we can generate opportunities for businesses and homes to build out there. As far as infrastructure is going, the, I think, Shiloh Springs Pumping Facility, which was built in 1911, will be facing needed renovation in the near future. So, and again, we're talking also market-rate apartments, whether it's where the old hospital is or other adaptive reuse opportunities we can employ. It will provide housing for a lot of people. So the bottom line is our future.
Thanks, John. We know, I'm going to go back to my single issue, is if we do not have a safe city, it doesn't matter how many parks we have, what kind of amenities we have. If you cannot go over to Waterloo and not be shot in a car as someone's driving by, or even a few weeks before that at the ATM there in Richland in the Calmia Plaza and have a strong-arm robbery, someone put a gun to your head, what difference does it make if we have all these other things? So we're going to have to work on that, and we're going to have to work with our police force. And like we said, we have to make sure that they have the resources to keep them safe so that they can keep us safe. That's the major one. That's the first one in my book. Then I look at economic development. I see that we have opportunity zones that have been introduced. These are not public-private. These are strictly private development that people want to use in areas where maybe they need a little help, and they could be utilized and be such a symbiotic relationship because these people are looking to invest, and they get a tax write-off for this, and the city doesn't put anything in. Housing, John mentioned. We have to have housing for these young people. You know, they're not ready to buy a $500 house. We have to have affordable housing. That doesn't mean Section Eight or anything like that. That doesn't mean Section 8 or anything like that. They just have to have a place that they can live that is commensurate with the salary that they're making. And you know, those jobs that they're going to be getting, if we can bring companies in here, are going to help shoulder the tax base, which makes their housing lower. So I'm getting the sign, I guess I better, but, oh, okay, thank you. But these are all, these are all things that I think go into being able to attract young people here. Young people want good jobs. They want a good place to live. And they want to do things. They want to have fun things to do. So, you know, we should be able to put together a package that helps with that. And I think we're working on that now. And as you all know, government moves like molasses. But we're hoping that some of us can begin to speed things up and use our influence. I hope that all the things that I've been involved in, that you may be read in some of my literature, that I have connections, that I can, okay, thank you. Sorry.
A lot of different opinions up here today. My single most important item that I think is facing the city of Aiken is really trying to maintain the quality of our neighborhoods and maintain the quality of life that goes along with maintaining quality of neighborhoods. And that applies across the whole city. I've, you know, the way I've found out about this is by participating with the Aiken Council of Neighborhoods and going on some of their tours and seeing what actually goes on in this community in all of our neighborhoods. And some are good, some are bad, and some have blights in the middle of their neighborhoods that otherwise would be quite nice places to live. I think the city council has passed ordinances now that allows better control of those kind of things and have a way to go ahead and, you know, monitor and control neighborhoods and housing that's falling apart. I know there's around 160 houses that are scheduled for demo in this community. And this is, you know, a good thing that the city council's done at this point in time. But having the, what am I trying to say? Having the ordinance to allow this also puts the responsibility on the city council and the staff at the city to actually get out there and make this happen. You've got an ordinance, it says this is what must be done. We need people to enforce that and to enforce it actively to make sure that we can approve this and push it forward. And with better neighborhoods comes better public safety.
That's right.
And as a result of that, it maybe takes some of the burden off of the police force to be able to have to get out there. Because if people are taking care of their neighborhoods and keeping track of what's going on in their neighborhoods and participating with the police force to support and control the safety in their neighborhoods, we're all going to be better off for that entire circumstance. So for that, that's the reason I choose, you know, quality of neighborhoods and maintaining that quality to be the most important thing we can do because it goes through everything in this community and it supports a lot of good things in our, in our life in this community.
There's our chart. We're on to the audio questions now. First one, what should Aiken do to help the homeless?
What was that?
To help the homeless. What should Aiken do to help the homeless?
Who goes first?
John Brad, do you go?
Back to you, John.
Affordable, low-income housing to shelter them. It's as easy as that.
You know, I think some people believe there aren't any homeless here in Aiken, but I beg to differ with you. If you go to Christ Central, if you talk with Judy Floyd there or with Catherine Clayne Way, they do a count every year, and it's only for one day, at one hour. And if they can't find those people, which they're very hard to find, they don't always stay in one place, that's how they determine the homeless population for your area. And I know that we have a lot of entities like Christ Central, Our Lady in the Valley, lots of independent Acts, Salvation Army, but we need to have permanent solutions for them. And I know that giving them their GED, giving them medication that they can stay on so that they can keep their job. I'm on the community medical clinic. I will tell you, it's amazing if people can just stay on their blood pressure medicine and their diabetes medicine, they can hold down their job and make enough money to support their family. So a lot of these things go into it, and what John said is part of it. Having a place where they can put their head at night and that they can keep their job because they have a home to go home to. But there's things that we can do, and we're doing them. We just have to keep doing them. You know, if we invest in our future, our future will invest in us.
Yeah, homelessness is a problem that is not impossible to solve, but it is very, very difficult to work your way through it. And I think some of the best ways I've seen in the country are really private organizations that provide support to the homeless. And by support, I'm talking about positive support. Helping them, you know, have a hot meal for the day, have a good start to the day, provide clothing and, you know, shelter for them and their families if it's a family homeless situation. And that, a lot of that, as I said, comes from private sources. A lot of it comes from churches and other organizations that have been set up to do that. I think the way the city council can get involved in that is to more actively support the organizations that are out there that do these kind of things for our homeless. I don't know that the city, with the circumstances we have right now and taxes and things like that, has a lot of extra money in that budget unless they create that money in that budget to provide that support. So as a result, I think the city council needs to, and I don't know which way is the best way to do it, I'll be honest about that. But should, you know, this should be something that's important to the city council that we look at and that we find a way to provide better support to these organizations. And I think that's the way to go with it and see where we can get.
I think I agree with everyone up here in that Aiken is, definitely has a lot of really great organizations out there that are doing things to help the homeless population, to help the underprivileged population. And I believe what we can do as a community is to promote outreach, not necessarily just from the city, but from individuals, from small businesses, from the larger businesses. Getting out there and helping these organizations like Acts that have stores, that have food pantries, that have things available for people. They all need help, not just from the churches and from the organizations that are filtering in, but just volunteers from the community. Being someone that goes out and looks into these places and takes an active role in helping out and giving back, I think that's very important in helping out the situation and giving people the resources that they need.
Thank you. I'll keep this mic open. Second question, you'll start. What question were you hoping to be asked tonight and how would you plan on answering?
Is that for me?
You started.
You don't like me, do you? What question was I hoping to be asked?
What question were you hoping to be asked tonight and how would you plan to answer? I was asked this in my job interview.
Talk about a setup, man.
I guess when you think about it, you're hoping that you'll be asked why you want to do this. And then you're scared they're going to ask you that. Because I look at the gentleman up here with me, and you know what I feel? I feel great pride that these three men have joined me here and have joined themselves to offer for service for our community. I'm telling you, we're very blessed. There's a lot of them. There's no competition. And I have to say, they're all gentlemen. We've all conducted ourselves in a very fine way. As far as I can tell, I have not picked up on one little scintilla of ugliness. So to have this many people for one district offering, wanting to help to make our city better, I think that's encouraging. And I think that's, when someone asks me that, say, yes, I want to be part of that. I want to be part of a city that cares, that has enough people to show up so that, you know, there's many, many that it's no one. You can't get anyone to run, or maybe one. So I feel that that is a blessing that we've come out of with this.
You really want to do this, didn't you? I haven't had that job interview in years, and here we go.
I think we should gang up on him, don't you?
Let's get him, let's get him.
Go ahead.
All right. I'll take my time with this. No, actually, my question is exactly the same. I wanted, you know, somebody to ask me, why in the heck do you want to do this? Okay? Have you lost your mind?
Yes.
Were some of the comments I've gotten along the way? Isn't there something better you can do with your retired years? Don't you get in enough golf? I've had it all, okay? But the main reason I want to do this is because I've spent my entire life, since I was a kid, involved in various different public service activities. From teaching Down Syndrome children to swim when I was in high school, to coaching with my kids, to actively being involved in community service organizations like the J.C.'s and other groups like that as I've grown through my career. I've spent my spare time, not only with my family, but trying to better my community. Since I've been here, I've jumped right in. I've gotten actively involved in the city of Aiken. I've gotten involved in my neighborhood with the Hounds Lake Neighborhood Association and the Villas Homeowners, you know, Association. I've gotten involved with SCORE Business Mentoring, which is one of my favorite things I think I've ever done, trying to do everything we can to promote young businesses and help these people. And it's totally, the 45 or 46 SCORE volunteers we have in this town, it's all volunteer, and it doesn't cost people a nickel to get good advice on how to build a business. So that's my reason. I guess when you sum all of that up is because I want to contribute. I want to be a part of this community. I chose to live here. I don't have to live here. I have family here and they like it here, so. Thank you.
I think for me, question would be, if you could have any business come to Aiken, what would it be? And I think kind of something that would sum up a lot of what we're looking for, bringing young people in, having business grow, having opportunities for jobs. I would love to see an entertainment complex, something like a Dave and Buster's that has something for all ages, offers activities all the time for people, day and night, you know, can be open 24 hours. We don't have much in Aiken that's open after, you know, 8:00. Some people, you know, younger, they, you know, they get out of class at 8, 9 o'clock, they want to go do something. In all seriousness, I mean, I think it would be great to have a business that's kind of more focused on entertainment, something that lets people get out and have fun and not have to leave Aiken, to stay here and have a place that they feel safe and they feel that they can just enjoy themselves. It doesn't have to be just for kids. If you've ever been to one, they have great food, actually, so it would be a restaurant on top of that. But I think that's something that I think the community would really benefit from.
I think so, too.
The question that I hope to be asked. And what was the second part of it?
What would be your answer to it?
My answer to that is, well, nonpartisan elections. I think it's something we need to do in this city is to do away with partisan elections. There's only, I believe there are only seven cities in the entire state of South Carolina that has, still has partisan elections. Three of them are in Aiken County, North Augusta, New Ellington, and here in Aiken. When you vote your backyard, you have no need or no use for political parties or ideologies. Sitting on the city council, you're not there to advance any party line. You're there to serve your constituents. And I just think it would be a vast improvement, and I would support wholeheartedly a movement to be partisanized, if that's such a word.
It works.
Political parties in this city. I am a Democrat, proudly I'm a Democrat on national issues. But when it comes to my backyard, we are all on the same page. Listen to us tonight. We share, if you read the article in the paper, a lot of us said the same things. So there's really little need for political parties. And if I'm elected, I will work to that end. Thank you.
So you guys kind of already beat to it. Just going to ask for another round of applause, so. We have invited all of the candidates to kind of hang out in the gold pumps or throw their impressions and a lot of cookies to the back, I'm told. So please feel free to help yourself, ask some questions, get to know your candidates, your representatives. And again, thanks for coming. Don't forget, the Republican primary, my left side of the table is on August 13th. Thank you.